Township of Precipity, Troy Hills. Township Council Agenda Meeting, December 9th, 2014. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the flag salute.
Mr. Stanton, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrify.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio; Ellen M. Sandman, Business Administrator; Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator; John Iglesino, Esquire, Township Attorney; Yancy Roserma, Township Clerk; and Ann M. Cucci, CFO. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting of...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...December 16th, 2014. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance: Adequate notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on both the Daily Record on December 20th, 2013, and the Store Ledger on December 23rd, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to our local newspapers and radio stations on December 18th, 2013. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, Public Access Channel 21, at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays, and also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Okay, before we go into closed session, I would just like to congratulate Precipity Hills High School's football team on their state championship. It was a great game. I'd also like to thank the Precipity Hills, the marching band who supports the team each and every week. They put on a great performance before the game started. Okay. Closed session resolution: Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege in the following litigation matters: Baldwin Manor versus Township of Precipity; Ardi Reilly versus Township of Precipity; Precipity versus James Carrify; Wildlife Preservation versus Precipity; Contract Negotiations and Legal Advice. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Carrify.
Yes. Okay, ordinances for separate readings and public hearings? We all set with those?
Yes, they're all set.
Okay. Status of adopted ordinances? You go with those? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, discussions, reminders?
I'm sorry, I forgot to put in the effective date. The effective date for all these is December 22nd.
Okay. December 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, scheduled meetings, December 16th, 2014, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting. January... Of course, what are we gonna go with the...
Yeah.
The 6th?
If you'd like, yeah, that's for further discussion.
Go with January 6th?
Everyone has a calendar, if you'd all want to look at it.
Yeah, the 6th is the Tuesday.
Yes, so January 6th for our reorganization meeting.
Do you want to do the 6th at what time, 7:30?
Okay, can we go with 7 o'clock? Move it up a half an hour?
7:30 is fine.
Stick with 7:30 for that?
Yeah.
The reorg meeting?
Yeah.
That's the 6th.
The reorg will only take a few minutes anyway.
Okay. And then we'll just follow it right up with our...
Immediately following.
Our agenda meeting? Okay. Okay, minutes for approval? Questions or concerns?
You might get a few more, but there'll probably be 90 seconds.
Okay.
I'm pushing.
I think that, is it now a time if there were any corrections on the minutes at this point, or at the, at the, the meeting of the next meeting, 16th?
Either. If you catch something now or later. Anytime you catch a mistake that needs to be fixed, yeah, please let me know.
Okay. All right, I don't...
I noted some errors on, on the couple of them, so I'll contact you and I'll let you know the errors.
Yeah, please, I didn't bring them with me, so yeah.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna be in our pack at the minutes, but I didn't bring it from the...
I know, it's too big of a...
Yeah, I had them at home from the email.
Yeah, please let me know, and I'll advise everybody else to those corrections, sure.
Thank you.
Administration bids taken, none to be taken, December 11th, 2014, 11 AM. Seal proposals for rental of golf carts. Quotations, proposals, qualifications received August 6th, 2014, 11 AM. Seal qualification statements for health insurance broker and record services requested none, ordinances none. Discussions, food trucks, non-commercial solicitation. Questions or concerns there? Okay, resolutions?
Well, we, these were both for discussion, but did we assign somebody to research these or come back with a recommendation?
Yes.
Well, discussion, food trucks and non-commercial solicitation.
Yes, Mr. Valori and myself was for food trucks.
Yep.
And there was a request for a meeting, and I'm waiting to hear back from my colleague, councilman, to see if he's available or not.
Okay, how about the non-commercial? Anybody was assigned for that?
Not yet, no.
Not yet?
Nobody?
Okay.
That was from the last meeting, the non-commercial?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on resolutions?
With regard to the first one, we've been talking in administration as well as with the council with regard to a possible modification in the structure of the council meetings. I believe the best place for that to have the discussion would be at our finance meeting. So my recommendation would be, at this point, because of the lateness in, in the year, that maybe as we pursue possibly modifying how the council meetings would be, you know, first and third, second and fourth, or however that will be, that maybe you stick for January and February at the latest, stay the, stay the course, if that's all right with the mayor and council president.
What would be the logic in changing our Tuesday meetings?
You wouldn't change the Tuesday meetings, you would just be looking to having a, a regular meeting on the first and a regular meeting on the third, as opposed to these work meetings. It's, I will give, I'm gonna put something in writing, Mike, to describe what we're talking about. Most, most councils now, in throughout Morris County, utilize a format where everything is out from the, the agenda is in your packages by the Wednesday before that Tuesday, and it allows for discussion and questioning all through the, the week, right up until the, the moment of the, you know, the meeting. And there's action, and then, so, so that what you'll have is, instead of, in Precipity, which has so many issues and so many topics that need to be addressed, instead of having a, a work meeting and a regular meeting, you'd have two regular meetings, and the, and the work process would happen during the course of the week. And that would make sure, that, that the administrator would, would make sure that they were available, that there would be constant communication between the clerk and the administration to make sure that all your concerns or questions were, were addressed. And that way we would be able to accomplish, I believe, something, but it's still up for discussion.
The only problem I have with that is, at our work sessions, where we're discussing what we want to do, or what the intent is to accomplish, the pros and cons, the public can hear the pros and cons during our work sessions on that first Tuesday, okay? If we're gonna discuss this back and forth between the council administration over the phone or with memos, okay, then the public never gets the input we have that they get now from our work sessions.
And the way that's handled is, there are times when the, the topic is of need to have a discussion, so you do have a discussion, and sometimes it goes over to regular meetings. But the majority of things are a lot of pro forma, and I don't ever...
A lot of it's routine.
Yeah, a lot of routine. And what I find myself doing is, I sit through, I'm sorry, we, we're, I'm sorry, I'm going on. I mean, we sit through a meeting, and then it's the next meeting, and it's a lot of the same thing, so it, it's still worth the discussion. I don't dispute, I want to make sure, I hate the word transparent, that there is transparency, that there is, I, I don't hate it for its fact, but I, I don't want, it gets overused.
That's what I'm afraid we're losing some of that.
I understand that. I don't, I, I think it needs to be discussed because I would like to see a lot more work being done. And I will be honest with you, Mike, I've been here since June, and I've been to the council meetings. We don't seem to have as much discussion at the discussion meeting. When I came to the first meeting, I was, okay, all right, I guess we're gonna discuss food trucks, and it went, we, and I was on, okay, next, anybody have any questions? So I, I don't mean to, I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just saying, I would like, I'm here, going on six months, and I would like to say, could we have a discussion on that? And it does, it wouldn't hurt, but I would, not for, not for any loss in the communication with our public, absolutely not, but let's, let's see if, if it has, if it has legs. And if it doesn't, then we go back to the way it would be. However, I will promise you this, I will have more discussions at the discussion meeting, if that's the way we go, because it, it needs to be done. Okay? I'm sorry, I do go on, I know. Thank you.
Okay, engineering report, Mr. Stanton?
Manor Lake Dam. Manor Lake's the only township-owned lake. The dam's in need of replacement, or our consultant has been working with the DEP to obtain permits for the replacement dredging of sediment from the lake. The following is an update for, from our consultant. Next steps: The wetlands delineation survey has been completed, sediment samples at the lake bottom have been collected or being tested, results are expected next week. Design and permitting plans are being completed in anticipation of January submission to the NJDEP.
And Brian, as you always say, just, just for the record, I do want to let you know that I haven't, I am in receipt of the extended information from Cherry Weber, our, the engineer that's working on it, dated December 5th, and it is a very, a very, actually, it's a very good report. It delineated all the wetlands, and myself and the engineer have spoken about it, and I'm meeting with him at 9:30 tomorrow to talk about this and a few other topics. So it is on our radar. It might slip a little bit, we thought we were gonna have everything to the DEP by the end of December, but it looks like it's January. But we're, we're following it very closely for the, for the residents of that area. Thank you.
Okay, well, others, no council action required.
I had asked that Reynolds Avenue be kept on the engineering report until work has started. I don't see Reynolds Avenue on here. I know I got a one-sentence response at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's, and it's disappeared from his report.
In deference to the engineer, and Yancy will bear me out, we received the report, I think, five minutes ago, before it got onto the agenda, so I apologize if I had, had more time to review that. But I will be seeing him at 9:30 tomorrow morning, and I will advise him of your disappointment on Reynolds Avenue, and I will believe that it will be appearing next meeting. Okay?
Chief Financial Officer?
Yes, we have the transfer resolution. This is the last two months of the year, and the first three months of the next year, we transfer money from salary and wages to other expenses as needed. You will have this, I'm gonna say by Thursday of this week, to review. The other thing we have is from Terry, our tax collector, cancellations of some tax overpayments that's common again. And the other thing I have is the corrective action plan for the audit. I thought that we would review it in the Finance Committee. It is prepared and finished, well, for review, actually, and I'm not sure what, whether I should distribute it to you directly, or I think that's what we should do.
I, I think the recommendation is that we distribute, began because of timing and whatnot. It is done, it's complete, and I would like to make sure that each one of you have it in, in your hands now, because it is something that does have, you know, it has a 60-day window, but we're well beyond the 40 days anyway.
And we're in good shape, it's just, I was, we had discussed that we would have a committee meeting, so I waited until then, but because we don't, it'll either be tomorrow or the next day you'll have it to review, and please, you know, comment before the next meeting, okay?
Before the 16th.
Attorney?
One, one report, Mr. Council President, this regards Baldwin Manor. On Wednesday, November 26th, a panel of the Appellate Division issued a written opinion unanimously affirming the trial court's dismissal of Baldwin Manor LLP's challenge to the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills Solid Waste Collection Program. Baldwin Manor LP is the owner and operator of a 240-unit garden apartment complex located on Baldwin Manor here in Precipity. In the early 1990s, Baldwin Manor participated in the Township's solid waste collection program. At that time, the Township collected garbage cans at the curbside along a public road adjacent to Baldwin Manor's complex. In or about 1995, Baldwin Manor voluntarily ceased using the Township's services on its behalf, which resulted in a myriad of problems related to health and safety at its complex. The Township responded by offering Baldwin Manor onsite collection of both garbage and recycling from cans, which Baldwin Manor refused and had a private contractor provide for its refuge. In 19, in 2009, Baldwin Manor sought reimbursement from the Township for past garbage and recycling costs of its private garbage collector pursuant to state statute. That statute requires municipalities to either provide services to multifamily apartment complexes in the same manner as provided to single-family residents who live along public roads, or to reimburse the complex for its cost of private garbage collection. In response, once again, the Township offered Baldwin Manor onsite garbage and recycling collection from cans, and they again refused and brought suit again seeking reimbursement. Baldwin Manor argued that the Township's collection service, curbside or onsite collection garbage in cans, was unworkable, unhealthy, unsanitary, and inefficient in accordance with the Burke decision, which is a New Jersey Supreme Court decision. In June of 2013, Judge Wiesenbeck found for the Township and dismissed Baldwin Manor lawsuit. The judge found that Baldwin Manor was not entitled to reimbursement because the Township offered Baldwin Manor reasonable accommodation to curbside collection. In other words, without participating in the program, Baldwin Manor could not prove at this time that the onsite collection program from the Township was unreasonable. The matter was appealed, the Appellate Division unanimously agreed with Judge Wiesenbeck's determination, and this was a very big victory for the Township, not just in terms of Baldwin Manor, but in terms of other, and the ramifications that it would have with respect to other garden apartment multifamily complexes in the Township. There was a potential liability in ex, well in excess of $3 million, which has been averted now on behalf of the Township, both as a result of Judge Wiesenbeck's decision and the affirmation of that decision by the Appellate Division. We have on the agenda tonight for action by the Council, an agreement with Baldwin Manor, which is identical to the agreements that the Council has passed with regard to other multifamily apartment complexes in town. In essence, that agreement provides that Baldwin Manor will issue a full release to the Township. You may say, why do we need a release since we wanted the trial court and the Appellate Division? The reason is because Baldwin Manor has until tomorrow to file certissurari with the New Jersey State Supreme Court, and we have reached agreement with Mr. Spiolter, who's the owner of Baldwin Manor this afternoon, that he would be agreeable to signing the agreement. If the Council were to approve this agreement tonight and the mayor were to sign it, he would not file cert tomorrow. Under that agreement, in addition to the release, the Township will provide for pickup with bins, in the same manner that the Township provides for other apartment complex owners who have signed and executed a release agreement with the Township. The amount of money that Baldwin Manor will pay for this service is specified in the agreement. The dollar figure was computed by Mr. Schneider, who's doing this now consistent with the model that has been used for all of the other complexes who have signed up for this to date. So it is, is my recommendation that the Council pass this resolution, and that we will have execution copies for the mayor to sign tonight. We'll get it over to Mr. Spiolter tomorrow, and we fully anticipate that that agreement will be executed, and we will have another satisfied customer.
Thank you. Township offices, committees? Communications, correspondence, applications, any questions? Okay, at this time, entertain a motion, open up a public hearing? Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Carrify.
Yes. Okay, if you do come up, please state your name and address, and sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
Good evening, Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. You're gonna do this thing here with the Baldwin Gardens, I, I sure hope the town has the manpower. I have a paper here, it concerns the litter ordinance, and I would like the town, the police are entrusted to enforce the litter ordinance, and the police are not enforcing the litter ordinance. In our housing ordinance, we give the Housing Department enforcement capabilities, I'm asking or suggesting that the Department of Sanitation has the same enforcement capabilities in their ordinances. And specifically, and on the, on North Beverwick Avenue, we still have the same problem. We have a clean communities program that's not doing any litter abatement at all. That's supposed to be one of the main components of, of clean communities. There are emptying garbage cans that are being filled from the local franchises in business and from households, there's household garbage. I showed this to Mr. Schneider, Mr. Pavlik, so apparently they take it to the police, and the police say that they don't have any power to do anything. I totally disagree with that. And when you reach into a garbage can and you can find someone's address there, and these are chronic offenders, then how, how did the garbage, how did it get there? Did it fly into the can? Really, this is, we need, the Department of Sanitation needs, Mr. Pavlik's riding all over Precipity, we need to concentrate our energy in certain areas like North Beverwick, and nail these people that are doing this, and it should be between the sanitation department and the, and the police department. So I, I just typed up a paper to give to the council here. And I just want to say a short thing again, I don't understand why the Township or the Council, the mayor or the administrator, why we don't comply to the Highlands' master plan. We'd be saving a lot of money on these lawsuits, the developers would not be able to be suing the town. You could find it all in, in the Highlands Act, contact the Highlands community, we'd be protected. And I fail to believe that our local planning board or anything come up with a better plan for the future for this town and the region than the Highlands has come up with. And there's many, many benefits, including not being sued by developers like RD now. But I'd like to submit these three papers about the litter ordinance, and if you guys think there's, there's anything here that, that can happen, I'm willing to work with Mr. Schneider. According to him, they're gonna hire me in April, I'm gonna be some kind of litter cop up there, so I think we could find some of these people and give them a wake-up call, right? You're part of the community, you don't dump your garbage, and we're wasting too much time up there and eating garbage cans. And how are we gonna keep up with, with everything else? We've got all these apartments and everything, right? I mean, they say 15% of the solid waste is allowed to be mixed. Well, 15% of what? A trillion? A trillion tons or something? I don't know. I, I just think we could do a lot better job. I'm willing to try to help the town.
Sure. If you could just give that to the clerk. Thank you. Nick, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thanks, Nick, I'll make sure everyone gets a...
Yes, Tom? Hey, I wasn't gonna bring this up tonight, but on the way over tonight, I took the back path out of my house, and I went by this one house on Torn, there were six cars on it. And I don't want to talk about that, and I won't waste my five minutes with it, but where do we stand with that late tail tax? I haven't been around that much, but if you can give me a call this week.
Sure.
Next thing, Ellen, I didn't bring it up last week because you weren't, last month because you weren't here. Did you get any information on the Garden State Jeff? Because we've been in that plan now, have you worked...
Three years now.
It was your first year, so it's the fourth year. Did we get a rebate back from Garden State Jeff?
This is the third year, I said the fourth year.
This is the fourth year.
This is year three, Roy. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As Mayor Luther's last year, that we were still with the Morris County...
Yes, of which I was a member for 27 years, so, you know. I understood why you left.
Well, you know what, you want to save, do you have more questions? I don't want to ease up your time.
The other thing I just want to bring up tonight, oh, that's right, your office has committed back to you too, with these insurance plan that we have, what's the cap?
The stop loss is 125.
Is that 125 per family or per, per...
Incident. I think it's per, per... I think it's per...
Incident, per individual.
So you get back to that...
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, right.
The other thing, you know, last month, Mr. Lucino wanted to...
Roy, just, just, excuse me, hold the time.
Yeah, no, there is no rebate.
That's why there's no answer, because there is no rebate. It doesn't work that way.
Yeah, but that, that's our premium that we pay.
The rebate comes back when they analyze and then it's given, in fact, Paula will be there.
You have to be in the plan for three years.
Yes.
So we started a little over again when we got out of the Morris County Jeff.
Right, right. And now we're going...
Why would you go into self-insurance plan if you're not gonna benefit from it? I was involved in self-insurance plan.
So was I, and all I'm gonna say is, Paula's going there tomorrow, she will ask about if there is gonna be a rebate, they don't always give a rebate because they want to put, yeah, because they can't claim loss, yeah, I know.
I, I know. You were involved in the Jeff. You're, I'm gonna get off the self...
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you were in Morris County Jeff, didn't some of the towns get money back?
Yes, we did.
Oh, yeah. So I'm asking, why are we getting money back? It doesn't pay to be in a plan doing self-insurance.
I, I agree, and, and Paula will have that answer tomorrow to tell you when.
Okay, let me get back to you.
Yeah, and then we can...
So anyway, so on Monday I put in...
You don't get a rebate.
To get the letter at Mr. Lucino. And I got the response back from Yancy's or Township Clerk, please be advised, no such government records exist. My question is, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, we paid for it, why would it not be available to the taxpayers? It might not have been on town station, why, why wasn't it available to the public?
I can answer it if you're, at the end of your time.
Okay, I'm done.
The reason is because my work product is not a government record.
Absolutely. And what I'll do, Roy, if there's been claims, I mean rebates given back, I'll list them.
Right, my work product is with me.
You, it was an interesting conversation you had before about having the change in the format of the council meetings.
Yes, yes.
Just to bring you up to speed, which I'm sure you do know, but maybe if you're not aware, up until earlier this year, we had an ordinance that said that we were required to have four council meetings per month, and that hasn't been followed for several years. At the reorg meeting, the council always, the last, I don't know, maybe seven or eight years, decided that they wanted to just make it two council meetings per month. But the way it always was for us, going back to when I was a kid, and Mr. DePiero certainly remembers as well as Mr. Barberio, that we would have the four meetings a month. And maybe you can refresh me. I think the two meetings a month would be on the back table, and those were the real workshop.
That's the...
Those were the real workshop sessions. So I was a big advocate for having four council meetings a month. Maybe you don't need them anymore for, but certainly three, and have the one workshop that would be open to the public.
Right, and I think what you're saying is what I was saying about the awkwardness of trying to have a discussion as I go like that all the time. I think...
Right, and Nancy will remember that I was hawking it all for a year, that I thought two council meetings, right? Hawking on it, it was...
Because it's really one council meeting.
It really is one council.
Yeah, that's...
Right, it was really just one council meeting a month.
That's what you had.
The town decides, it's just...
I...
It's just...
That's what I stated.
It was silly. The other question is, Nancy, is it possible, or do we have to wait till tomorrow after the settlement agreement is executed to get Exhibit A for the resolution?
Can I answer? It's supposed to be an attachment to the resolution. I just don't make copies because it's 16 pages, so I can get you a copy.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And then the last thing I want to talk about, well, actually, it's two things. I've never talked about the case publicly, and I'm going to stay away from it. It's not my place to talk about it. But I did attend the pension hearing for Mr. Karifi yesterday, and I'm not going to talk about what was said at the pension hearing, even though that was all public. But my question to you, Mr. Sandman, is that there were two attorneys down there. One was the labor attorney who represented the township, and the other one was Mr. Driscoll from Township Attorney. Mr. Driscoll did what I did, and just sat in the audience and didn't do anything. He didn't go up there. He didn't say anything. There was no input. Why would we have him going down there? I can't imagine that he went down there for free. And with travel expenses and the time that was spent down there, I'm sure you're talking, which in the scheme of things for a town this size, it had to be at least $1,000, $1,200 bucks. But what was the purpose of him going down there, other than just to be a witness of what happened?
I can address that.
When I'm all done, okay. And then the last thing is, I did get a copy of Mr. Inglesino's statement that he tried to say. Personally, I think he should have been allowed to read it. But there was one, there was one quote in there. It was on page, between pages four and page five, where Mr. Inglesino wrote that Mr. Karifi had downloaded the contents of his work computer to not only his external hard drives, but also to, quote, "to township-owned flash drives, which he sought to retain for his own personal use," unquote. On March 24th of this year, at the budget hearing, it was me who asked the question, and as well as Councilman Peluso, but I was able to pull my quote and my question mark to Keith Phillips. And my exact question was, what are the actual flash drives for? And that was in reference to a line item in the budget that many flash drives are being purchased for the police department. And well, now-retired Captain Clark responded, quote, "The flash drives are to maintain reports and document and log everything. It's basically the police officer's notebook for all the reports." And that was what Captain Clark said. When I was a councilman, and I really want to stay away from this case, but my biggest concern was, was there ever a breach of security? And that was why I asked this question about the flash drives. So my question to you is, are all these township-issued flash drives accounted for to current and retired police officers? And if they're not, the whole purpose of these flash drives is to put police reports on them, and if police officers who are currently hired, on the job and retired, if they're in their physical possession of them, why? The only thing I can think of is for them to take home, to do the reports at home. And you're not talking a lot of money. I mean, these flash drives are just a few dollars, but the whole point is, not the dollar amount, but it's the breach in security of sensitive data. Retired police officers, other than this one officer, it's clear that he does have possession of them, or did have possession of them. Do other police officers have them?
Thirty seconds.
And then that's it. Thank you.
In terms of Mr. Driscoll's participation in the hearing yesterday, Mr. Driscoll's purpose in going down there was primarily to be a resource in the case that members of the pension board had questions with respect to the litigation. The reason why we felt that would be necessary is because the pension board had requested all of the documentation with regard to the litigation in advance of the hearing. Mr. Trimbley, who's labor counsel, is not counsel in the litigation, and frankly, is just not up to speed or have knowledge of the litigation the way that Mr. Driscoll would. So he was down there primarily as a resource to answer any questions that may have been asked. As it turns out, Mr. Nelson, and the only reason why I raise this is in response to you saying that it's been widely reported. What was interesting was that the report said that there was, based on audio tape, we know that that did not come from the pension board because they don't audiotape the meetings, nor do they provide transcripts. We've confirmed that. But the account that was in the press does not, and I say the press, that was in the local publication, did not accurately in any way reflect what transpired. We received a copy of a letter today from the board secretary, and read it because it's brief. And the only reason why I have to read it is because of the misinformation that is out there and the inaccurate portrayal of what the board did yesterday. And the letter is addressed to Mr. Karifi. It was copied to the township, and it says very briefly, "The Board of Trustees of the Police and Farmers Retirement, PFRS, at its meeting December 8th, reviewed your recent updated letter and Stephen Trimbley's letters of November 24th and 26th on behalf of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills. As we recall, on June 10th, 2013, PFRS Board approved your request to begin collecting PFRS retirement allowance until your pension contributions were exhausted pending the final resolutions of administrative charges. The receipt of public pension is expressly conditioned upon rendering honorable service in accordance with NJSA 43:1-3. Since there have been no administrative charges sustained against you to date, the Board voted to allow you to continue collecting your monthly retirement allowance in the future. Should there be any administrative charges, the Division of Pension and Benefits will review the documentation to determine if any further board action is necessary regarding a honorable service review in accordance with NJSA 43-1-3." So, you know, the portrayal that was out there in the local publication did not accurately reflect what occurred at the meeting. You know that because you were there. And what this letter is, is the voice of the board. Because there were no sustained administrative hearings, the board felt, you know, we're not going to consider this, but in the future, if they are, they will. So that is really what occurred yesterday. Now, if the board did not ask for all of the litigation history, documentation, et cetera, then Mr. Driscoll would not have been in, would not have participated or attended the meeting, and I assure you, he had other things to do. But because they asked for it, we had to have him there as a reference. As it turns out, the board decided that they weren't going to consider the matter for the reasons they foresaid. But that answers your question.
Okay. Mr. Council President, I have 30 seconds left. Just not to argue with it, because Mr. Inglesino was right. The board did touch on those things. As far as Mr. Driscoll there, if he was much more up on the case, and Mr. Trimbley was clearly unprepared, then maybe we should have just sent Mr. Driscoll and not sent the labor attorney down there, and maybe Mr. Driscoll should have represented the township's interests.
Mr. Nelson, with all due respect to your legal acumen, your credentials, and your experience in managing lawyers and law firms, I don't send a general litigator to a pension board hearing. Mr. Trimbley and Mr. Driscoll serve two completely different functions at the meeting.
Okay. And I did bear witness, the meeting lasted about 15 minutes. The pension board, only two or three members spoke, and the general consensus was that as long as there were no charges, that the gentleman would receive his pension, and it was stated, Mr. Inglesino stated correctly, that if charges were ever brought forward, the pension board would revisit the issue. Would that be, would you agree with what I heard?
I agree with that, but you would have to hear that here in order to know it, because you wouldn't be able to read it in the local public.
But I, I heard it. I mean, I don't disagree with what you said.
Okay, time's up. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
But they said, you know, there was a criminal investigation going on for two-plus years, and no criminal charges have been filed. Mr. Trimbley asked the pension board...
Okay, time's up. Time's up.
Thank you.
He's got a couple of questions. Under the engineering report, there used to be an escrow question. I've asked this for many years, and Mr. DePiero had just asked it a few months ago. I see that it's been removed. However, are we doing anything to reduce the escrow amount?
And as I stated, it should have been on there, and I'm meeting with Justin tomorrow at 9:30, and it's on my list of things to discuss with him.
Okay, thank you. And Wall Avenue, I see no work is going to continue on that, which is understandable.
Yeah.
But I do have a question as regards to, I'm not sure about Wall because I've stayed away from that area because of the construction, but I know on Summit, they have all barrels lined up against the curb. Are they going to remain there? Is, you know, I don't know what they're going to do, you know, in the winter with the plows when it snows, so I'm just asking the question.
Okay. And Pat, I'll say this nice. I have your number. I'm asking Justin, and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and one of the last questions I have is, it relates to the sewer department. I know there was an investigation going on at one point. I know that employees received vice statements and came to these meetings, but never did anything. That was about one or two months ago. So can you tell me, if there is indeed an investigation going on, is it still going on? Who is investigating? I thought I read someplace somebody else was investigating again. I think the name was Sinclair, but I am not positive that they were associated with this investigation. So I'd like to know if the investigation is still on. I'd like to know who was investigating and what the status is, and who hired the investigators. Can any of those questions be answered here tonight?
Pat, do you have any more questions?
I think that is it, other than I don't like the idea about the changing of the council meetings either.
Can I ask, you can answer. I want to ask Pat a question. How your fence was taken care of?
Yes, Ms. Potatche, we will not be commenting on your question.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else? Step forward, entertain a motion to end the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, we have to take...
Oh, excuse me. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
We got a motion on the floor?
Yeah, that was good.
Who did you give this to, Nate?
Yes, you.
Resolution 2014-193, resolution of the Township Council of the Township Persipony Troy Hills authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement with Baldwin Manor. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Does it feel better?